Buying costs is $3.4 million. We've experienced high numbers of police and fire overtime, and we are now closing that gap on funding that. In the past, we've used our savings to fund that at year end, and now we will be funding that on the front end and adjust the budget appropriately, and that will be $3.2 million. For the fifth consecutive year, the city manager is recommending full funding of the school superintendent's request, and that increased funding is $2.8 million. Like everybody else, we have vehicles that run through the city, as well as the lights in buildings, and so on and so forth. We have vehicle fuel increases, and we will be experiencing an anticipated 50% increase in Virginia natural gas and 24% increase in Virginia power bills in the upcoming year. Those combined costs are $1.5 million. And while it sounds like a good deal to add $1.4 million for new positions, 31 new positions throughout the city, these are positions that will enhance our strategic priorities, and City Council heard about that today, including expanding our CARES team, adding social workers to our community medicine program, creating a Chance to Shine program for our homeless day service center, and adding three police officers for environmental enforcement throughout the city. Through extraordinary interest rates that we experienced last year, this time last year, and refunding issues that we took advantage of, we reduced our debt by $2.1 million. So the largest single component of expense in the general fund is the city's contribution to schools. Our contribution in the upcoming year will be over $123 million. By state calculations, our required local effort is slightly more than $56 million. So in essence, the city is providing an additional $56 million over and above what is required by state calculations. This number is based on the Governor Northam's December 2021 budget, and the state revenue is anticipated to increase by almost $20 million just from the state alone. Based on that, the school superintendent asked for an additional $2.8 million, which the city manager has included in our operating budget. Again, taking benefit of the lower interest rates last year, the school debt, which the city pays, schools are not allowed to contract their own debt, so all capital projects that are done by the schools and for the schools are paid for by the city. We reduced that debt by over $333,000. So the overall school budget increase will be almost $23 million or 6.7%, and this does not include a separate $2 million that we carry in our CIP to buy school buses, which we have done for the schools since 2010. And while we are very appreciative of the impact of the real estate tax assessment and the change in personal property tax due to inflation for all citizens and commercial businesses within the city, the city manager is not recommending any rate or fee increases for our user fees. In other words, for your water bill, your sewer bill that is provided for sewer disposal by the city, solid waste and stormwater fees, a resident will be paying the same rates next year as they are right now. So the next steps are to hear from the public tonight. The public can find the recommended budget on the city's homepage. As the city manager has indicated, there are printed copies, 500-page book, in all the libraries. City Council is hearing, as they have this afternoon, on very specific topics, and please call us with any questions. This is our favorite topic we love to talk about. We do. I could talk much longer, but the city manager gave me a very strict time limit about talking about the budget, but seriously, if you have any questions, please call us. I'll be happy to talk to you. Any member of the staff will be happy to talk to you. We'd really like to have your questions answered. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was very, very well done. We appreciate that. We will now open the floor up to speakers that have registered. Lamont Williams. Good evening.
Good evening. How y'all doing?
Doing good.
My name is Lamont Williams. I live at 641 21st Street, Newport News, Virginia, where I have lived for 28 years and raised three kids. I'm proud to be a resident of the southeastern community. Get to the point. The Brookings Institute pretty much says this in their breakdown in their study of urban development. They define gentrification as this, in its simplest form, "The process by which higher-income households displace lower-income residents of a neighborhood, changing the essential character and flavor of that neighborhood." And I can go into a lot of stuff, but there's a basic gentrification playbook that most urban areas do. Number one, you depress the amounts and evaluations of the homes to create interest and investment. The second stage, then, as knowledge of the investment begins to happen in the neighborhood and the rent gap begins to spread, displacement begins to occur. That's where conflict starts happening. The last stage happens when prices escalate, as the effects of rehabilitation are more apparent, displacement occurs in force, and new residents have a lower tolerance for social services facilities and other amenities that they view as undesirable, and original residents are displaced at a larger scale along with their institutions and their traditions. I work for the CAC as a chair, working alongside the city. We've asked them this question from the very beginning of the CNI development. Will gentrification happen? No, that's not what we want. We don't want that. We want transformation. We want revitalization. Then I get a postcard, and that postcard tells me that I gotta pay 28.2% in increased assessment. The average in the city is only 14.4%. Every one of my neighbors that are at least 25%, you're playing the playbook. And when I thought the city was on my team, playing defense with me against gentrification, that postcard told me that not only do y'all have my back and y'all playing safety to make sure it won't happen, y'all are doggone quarterbacks on the other team. Do not let this happen. You cannot allow legacy homes who have been in that neighborhood for decades have no other choice than to sell or give in to these callers who called me every moment wanting me to sell. We're more innovative than this. Let's be our own Brookings Institute and come up with solutions so that people can stay in their homes and not be forced to have to move. Thank you.
I do feel obligated to let people know, who may not know, that the council is not responsible for assessing property. That is a separate department that this council...
You're responsible for the vote.
Sir, you're out of order. That is a separate department that we have no control of.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor, on that? And also, Mr. Williams, you know, the assessments are done, but you know real estate. You've proved that you know real estate, but the thing that happens is, the real estate market, if the prices of homes increase, which the council does not have anything to do with, the people on the market, and I'm quite sure you've seen television, and you've seen the rising cost of homes, the people now, when the interest rates went down, more people could afford more house, so you had more people looking on the market, and it's still going on right now. So the good thing is, and we can have a conversation, but I just wanted to add this and make clarity, is that the assessments, the price driving of homes is not done by the city council. We don't do that. That is the real estate market.
DeeDee Clemmons.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
My name is DeeDee Clemmons. I live at 937 Ivy Avenue. I am a first-generation wealth gap closer. I am a former resident of Dickerson Court. I am also a former resident of Ridley Circle. I now own a home on Ivy Avenue. My question to all of you is, if I'm promoting self-sufficiency and generational wealth for the next seven to 10 generations to come, simply because it wasn't left to me, how will that baton be passed if I'm bought out of my first home by way of gentrification, redlining, overly properly taxing the land that I live on? How will my kids be able to teach my grandkids what this even looks like when the same playbook for over 100 years is still in play? This is the same playbook that put tons of ancestors under the dirt without anything. We're not talking 40 acres and a mule. We're talking a whole generation of children under you guys, and you guys are making decisions that last for 10 generations out. I ask that you please do not let this happen because it's just not right. Have a heart. This is your city. We have to vote for you.
Monica Kennedy.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
This is my first time here. I'm a Newport News resident over 32 years. I live in a demi-section of Newport News and Lansdowne. I recently became increasingly concerned because I'm starting to wonder, am I gonna be able to live in my home? I'm gonna be retiring in the next five years. It's scary. I got a community of elderly people who, during storms, we came together to help each other, but guess what? I can't help them if they can't afford to live in their house anymore, because guess what? I may not be able to live in my house that I worked so hard to pay for. So I get the assessment last year, a house of $50,000 more. I'm not going anywhere. That just means I'm paying more tax. I heard it's going up 17 something. I haven't even gotten my card in the mail yet, which happened to some of my neighbors last year. All I know is last year I was screaming. I know I'll be screaming more when I see it. The thing is, I've worked hard. My husband and I, we worked hard, raised our children here. I came to Virginia, but I see why people leave in Virginia, because they can't afford to live here. They can't. The taxes and the break that, you know, you said we're gonna get with the water and the waste, that's almost a mortgage right there when I get mine. So it's like, yeah, we're gonna get a break on that, but again, the taxes, we ain't talking medical care. We're not talking food taxes. We're not talking gas taxes we still gotta pay, medicines. How are we gonna make it? What y'all got in place to help the people to make it? You know, my taxes become my new mortgage when I don't pay it off. I got neighbors right now, they don't know. They don't know. I'm an active person, and when it comes to voting, I remember everybody, and when I vote for you, I wanna know what you're gonna do for us, the people, because I care more about the people than my own self, my seniors, because they're there. They're there where I'm gonna be, hopefully, one day, and I'm gonna wonder, am I gonna be able to live in my home? And right now, it look like I may be packing my bags and moving somewhere where I may not have all the luxuries that I have here in Virginia. I love Virginia, but I may can't stay here. I can't stay here. That's the way it's looking. So what are we gonna do? What can I do to help? You know, I wanna help. If I had time, I would've brought some people with me tonight. I talked to the assessor last year, and he probably would've told me the same thing said Ms. Kennedy. I don't know why I haven't got more calls. I said, a lot of them didn't get their assessment, but I'll be willing to help to do what needs to be done if need to be. That's what I'm looking at now. What can I do? I just want y'all to be here for us, to realize, we can't afford this. We can't continue. We can't continue with what's going on. I'm being honest. I've been here, and I love Virginia, but I don't know if I can stay here. I've been here, like I said, 32 years. Love Virginia. My husband love Virginia. I just can't understand where these increases are coming and how we're supposed to sustain our living.
Thank you.
You know, how are we gonna do it?
Thank you. Ashmeek Kilgore.
Good evening. Good to see you, good madam.
Good evening, everybody. How are y'all? My name's Ashmeek Kilgore, and I live at 230 Nat Turner Boulevard in Newport News, and I'm currently serving as the president-elect for the Board of Trustees at the Virginia Living Museum. My devotion to the museum began when I worked in the school division, and I saw the educational mission at the museum. The museum educates students across this entire peninsula through field trips, through virtual lessons and resources, and through family visits to the museum. And the experiences that the kids get at the museum, their active, their hands-on lessons about their natural world, and I think what that does is imprint for them a sense of wonder and a sense of responsibility about our environment and our community. So I'm here tonight on behalf of our board and our patrons at the museum to thank you for including the museum in your annual budget. Your city support is reinvested every day in the community through the work at the museum as we serve hundreds of thousands of visitors every year. With your support, we educate young people and the community about our state ecosystems and about our planet with living animals and plants, as well as non-live collections. We attract every, each year, over 280,000 guests come through the museum, and many experience our museum also now through social media programs that we've started since COVID. We support and we serve approximately 7,000 member families at the museum. We care for more than 240 species of living plants and animals at the Virginia Living Museum, and we work with more than 400 community volunteers each year at the museum. And even through the challenges of COVID, we're managing to grow and thrive for this We make it a point to inspire guests and our students to participate in natural science as they wander and work in the museum. We offer free and reduced admission days to all of our residents in Newport News so everybody can enjoy the museum, and we have a community education program that allows the museum to provide free admission to charitable organizations that serve the community. So this partnership that we have with the city, between the museum and our city, it really is a model of a public-private partnership. For over 56 years, you have supported our museum, and you've made it a place that was built by the community, beloved by our community, and sustained by the community. So I just want to thank you first for your service to the community, and I sincerely thank you for continuing your support to the Virginia Living Museum. Thank you.
Ben Talbert.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ben Talbert, 414 Wood Roof Road in the Haydenwood section of Newport News. Been a city resident for roughly 36 years. Raised three sons, and my wife and I live there with one of our children. I appreciate what the city manager put together as far as the presentation, and I can appreciate the pressures of inflation and the cost of gasoline and everything that we're all experiencing together. And I can also appreciate the proposed reduction in the tax rate, although I think it's insufficient. My tax rate assessment has gone up 18% in the last year, roughly 36% since 2017 with unchanged tax rate, and yeah, I realize that there's gotta be budgets met, and we've got to sharpen the pencil, but the taxpayers of this city pay this budget, and the bottom line is, the city, you all, answer to us. And I think it's important for you all to sharpen the, the city manager needs to sharpen the pencil and reduce that rate, tax rate, so we can have, again, we're all living this under the same pressures as the city manager is as well, every day-to-day, and I just wanted to voice my opinion on that. Thank you. Thank you.
Ben Gru or Grau?
Can you say that again?
Ben Grau or Gru? G-R-A-U. I'm sorry if I mispronounced.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ben Grau. I'm at 12734 Sand Pebble Circle. It's nice to see everyone. I'm here to talk with you with my comments on the proposed budget. My biggest concern is with the proposed year-to-year 2% cut to the real estate tax rate, which was nominally suggested to provide tax relief to residents. But why was the real estate tax rate chosen? We've all been hit by inflation, but a real estate tax cut benefits only those residents who are fortunate enough to own property, certainly not all residents. The cut disproportionately favors a class of people who have, over a large group of us who do not, young people, students, disadvantaged populations historically, the homeless, the poor, residents of Newport News who already struggle to make ends meet and are now struggling even more to pay rent, to pay for groceries and utilities. A tax change like this, which leaves out the lower-income and historically less wealthy populations, is unconscionable. As opposed to cutting this rate without a long-term plan, what we must do instead is move forward with a vision for the future that lifts up all people. But I always tell my daughter not to complain about problems if you don't offer solutions. So instead, I can think of a number of things that the city can do that will help all residents in Newport News, not just those who own property or property of high value. The list is long. A number of things include reducing rates for taxes that everyone pays, like sales taxes, funding transportation infrastructure that makes our city accessible and attractive to people of all income levels, funding for better parks, libraries, community spaces that get people active and create happier, healthier communities. Indeed, what we should be focusing on is happier and healthier communities for all, not happier wallets for some. This is my major concern with the proposed budget. I do also have some positive comments, for which I'd like to voice support. I strongly support the decision to fully fund our public schools, which have and continue to provide high-quality education for all residents of Newport News, including myself in the past. I support the funding for raising wages for city employees. I support the funding for public healthcare facilities that benefit residents of Newport News who might otherwise not have access to those services. I also urge continued strong funding for the Hampton Roads Transit Agency, as Newport News notably lacks some routes that I would've thought would've been no-brainers. And a strong public transportation system is the backbone to a strong urban economic core, which is something I think Newport News should strive for. To make a note about gentrification concerns that everyone's talking about, I'd also suggest looking into a land value tax as an equitable alternative to a property tax based on assessed values, which, as we've seen, vary greatly. That's all I have. Thank you for your time, and I hope you consider my thoughts.
Rohan Williams.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, council members, city manager. My name is Rowan Williams. I live at 744 Chapsworth Drive in Newport News. I'm also the executive director for the Peninsula Alcohol and Safety Action Program. I'd like to thank the city manager and the council for including us in their, in your budget for this year. Just want to tell you a little bit about our program. We are a criminal justice program, and we fall somewhere between probation and parole and corrections and court services. So what we do is, we provide services by way of the courts for citizens of this city. For fiscal year 2022, and the year ends in two months, we've already provided services for 1,613 residents in the city, which includes 655 DUI-related incidents. So what's our role? We help to put people's lives back together. We help to make, put people back to work so they can become tax-paying citizens, provide for their families, and contribute back to the society at large. So since I took over the agency in 2019, COVID happened, and so as a result, the agency has had to make changes to continually provide services for our citizens. Those changes included infrastructure upgrade, audiovisual infrastructure upgrades, software development, et cetera, just so we can continually provide services for our citizens and residents. So I'd just like to close by saying, the funding in the budget is vitally needed for our agency, and it'll continually help us to move forward to provide services that our citizens need. That's the time I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have. Is there a motion to continue the public hearing to April 14th this year at Denby Community Center?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Page 47, item E4, is a request to adopt an ordinance granting a renewal of a cable franchise agreement between the City of Newport News, Virginia and Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC. Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC, or Cox, provides cable television services in the City of Newport News. The city's current cable franchise agreement with Cox is set to expire on April 17th of this year. Cox has made application to the city as required by the Virginia Code and the United States Code requesting renewal of the cable franchise agreement. The city and Cox have reached an agreement on the terms and conditions set forth in the proposed franchise agreement. The city manager recommends approval. I don't see any speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Councilwoman Scott?
Four.
Councilwoman Vick?
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury?
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry?
Four.
Motion carries, 7-0.
Page 47, item E4, is a request to adopt an ordinance granting a renewal of a cable franchise agreement between the City of Newport News, Virginia and Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC. Cox Communications Hampton Roads LLC, or Cox, provides cable television services in the City of Newport News. The city's current cable franchise agreement with Cox is set to expire on April 17th of this year. Cox has made application to the city as required by the Virginia Code and the United States Code requesting renewal of the cable franchise agreement. The city and Cox have reached an agreement on the terms and conditions set forth in the proposed franchise agreement. The city manager recommends approval. I don't see any speakers. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Go move.
Moved in second. Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris?
Four.
Councilman Jenkins?
Four.
Mayor Price?
Four.
Council... Council-
I know there are two speakers, but it won't matter if we're not going to speak on what we're presenting.
She got to speak out of order, and I put my name on it, so I'm here to speak.
All right, hang on, sir. Just hang on a second.
Okay.
Is, is there any discussion on the motion?
That's all that matters.
All right, so we will hold the motion since we have people who have signed up to speak. Robert White Jr.
Excuse me. How you doing? My name is Robert White Jr. Live at 110 Iberia Drive, Newport News, Virginia 23602. I'm part owner of Apollo Taxi. First and foremost, she said that what was comfortable with the police. Why does my, my company or the business that I run have to be comfortable with the police allow? He, they firmly said at the last meeting, it's not what they want, it's what we want. We are the taxi commission, so we make the rules. Now, you've got a few people that constantly at these meetings that are in position of power, that constantly make these decisions for us. I'm one of the smaller companies, and it's hard for me to compete against these people when they're the ones making the rules. See what I'm saying? When they're the ones making the rules. The same people that were just getting ready to get up there and walk out, which is the manager or the board leader of said meeting wants to walk out. But she ain't charged. She's giving you guys the decisions that we collectively supposed to come together and make, not the police. What other business has to come to the police and say, are you comfortable with this?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify my comments. Anything the police department interacts with has to do with public safety.
It does, but at the end of the day, they said it's not about what they want, it's about what we want.
If it doesn't have anything to do with public safety, I absolutely agree.
Exactly. So it's not, it has nothing to do with public safety.
And my understanding is the things that are going forward do not-
How I would like to run my company has nothing to do with public safety. It has nothing to do with that. That's true totally-
It does when you're serving the public.
If I'm not breaking the law, if I'm not breaking the law, it has nothing to do with it.
I'll be happy to have folks meet with you and have further discussion.
I've discussed it with the people that came to the taxi.
Sir, do you want to finish your comments?
I wasn't able to. I've been being cut off.
I'm asking you now to finish your comments, if you would.
This is, this is crazy. Like I said, at the end of the day, we need to make better decisions on what we doing. You got the wrong people in charge making the decisions. You asking questions that definitely need to be answered. But at the end of the day, how much red tape do I got to go through in order to run my business, be profitable? I got to answer a bunch of questions with no answers. You know, he said something about the, the price. I do agree that our citizens need to pay a certain price, not too high, not too low. But at the end of the day, I got to come here and wait months on end when the gas price changed how long ago? Couple of months ago. I can't make no decision on could I increase my rates? Nothing. I got to wait months to come in here, talk to y'all, and get looked at nasty just because. Let's, let's, we got to do better. Y'all are up here to make decisions for us. We put y'all in position, make the decisions. Give us some answers.
What's the name of your company?
Apollo Taxi.
Good evening.
Vice Mayor, city council members, city attorney and city manager. I haven't been here for a long time because of COVID. I'm here for one thing today, which is something that's been bothering me for almost over a year. I'm the biggest cab company in the seat of Newport News. Junior will be taking over. The young man who left here, Ali, Hassan Ali, that's my son, he going to take over the business, but I want to pave the street for him before. Something happened last year that you are not aware of. As you all are aware, we don't have no reciprocity with the seat of Hampton. It's a conditional. Now, the seat of Hampton Cabs can pick up in the seat of Newport News. The city allowed- The city allowed. Not, I mean, I'm really, you all made me who I am today for 32 years. And I'm really glad that you are sitting over here to make the right thing for the city and the cab companies. Last year, in order for the city of Hampton cabs to avoid tax evasion and to disregard the reciprocity in our code, the city gave them 31 certificates that belong to the city of Newport News. I cannot pick it up, they can pick it up over here because they have illegal certificates. And it's about to talk to about this because for a whole year, I was scared of the COVID. I couldn't come out, but I'm here today. And that's the issue I got with the city. They do, I mean, they got tricked. Because they got tricked, because they didn't know that. The cab, when they were awarded the 31 cabs, I mean certificates, they knew that they're gonna bring the Hampton cabs over here to be certified. They were not aware of that. But we have to look back into that, and if we cannot change that, I'm asking the city to give me a lien on property tax. I don't have to pay. If they don't have to pay property tax, I don't have to pay. If they don't have to pay for business license, I don't have to pay those 31 certificates that have been given to the city of Hampton. That's all I'm here for you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Those are all the speakers that have signed to speak. There's a motion on the table to table this. Any discussion on the motion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion Cherry, seven zero.
All right. We are now at appropriations. I believe, yes. Page 231, item H. Madam Manager.
Yes, sir. We have four appropriations. The first is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $750,000 from the fiscal year 2022 bond authorization, community development category, in support of southeast community redevelopment. The second item is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1 million from the fiscal year 2022 bond authorization, public buildings category, for the building located at 2401 G Avenue. The third is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $1,850,000 for engineering and environmental mitigation services for the Little Creek dam improvement project. And the final one is a request to approve a resolution appropriating $5,462,770 from the fiscal year 2022 bonds authorized and unissued to the Newport News Public Schools for capital projects. I recommend approval of all four appropriations.
Is there a motion to approve items H1 through H4?
It's almost taken.
Moved in second. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question about the Waterworks repairs and everything. Is that coming out of Waterworks money or is it coming out of city? I know that there's a fine line there.
No, it's Waterworks funding.
It is. All right, thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Councilman Jenkins.
Four.
Mayor Price.
Four.
Councilwoman Scott.
Four.
Councilwoman Dick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Vice Mayor Cherry.
Four.
Motion Cherry, seven zero.
We are now at citizen comments on matter that are germane to the business of council. Our first person speaking is Jay Johnson. Excuse me. Good evening.
Good evening. You've already had a rough night. My name is Jay Johnson, formerly Janice. I live at 954 11th Street in Newport News. I'm here tonight representing the Newport News Hampton chapter of Virginia Organizing. As an organization, one of the roles we play in the community is to have citizens and members of our group tell us about the issues and concerns that they have that impact their lives. At the same time, we also try to teach them about what government does and how government works. Like in the city of Newport News, we're talking about the mayor, city council, form of government, and how that impacts them and what they need to know so that they can be more fully active participating citizens in their own communities. Recently, one of the issues that continues to pop up in our discussions is the perception that there's a lack of transparency between the city government and its citizens. In fact, this issue has been verbalized and exhibited in several meetings since January. For instance, in one meeting, a citizen inquired about federal dollars might be allocated toward gun violence. She was met with a barrage of information about what activities and dollars had been spent by the city over the nine years. That was very good information, and it's, of course, information that all of us as citizens would like to have known. In another instance, one of the members of a body that you have appointed, I think to look at or maybe advise you about the new housing development, which is replacing the projects that had been already torn down, came before this council and asked that their group be advised when new policies or actions were being considered before they were enacted. The Huntington Alumni Group, of course, has been before this council for years, asking to be heard or included in the planning for their alma mater. A new group at one meeting, a grassroots group attempting to work productively with juveniles in their community, was informed there was no way they were going to be funded because they lacked 501(c)(3) status. Whereas this was true, it might have been nice to at least acknowledge their efforts and then to advise them where they could get help. Lack of transparency in Newport News is losing its citizens' will to care about this city or to be involved in their city. It appears that the citizens feel they are unheard and/or underrepresented. This may not be a total thing, but in my life, a 70% generalization is a lot. So what we need to look at is how these decisions are being made because citizens don't feel they are consumers or citizens. They're beginning to feel that they are objects, and the decisions about their lives are made in some secret places and then brought out as fait accompli.
Ms. Johnson.
What is happening as a matter of the transparency is that the talents and skills of ordinary citizens are being lost. Our hope is that candidates for the mayor and council positions will take up this perception seriously and address ways to change the culture within our city that allows it to continue.
I'm trying to be patient. Your time is up. If you have them written, we would appreciate giving them to us so we can read that.
The Virginia Organizing chapter is having a public meeting on the 28th at the Pearl Bailey Library between 5:00 and 7:00, and this is one of the things we'll discuss.
Thank you. Tim Scott.
Hi, everyone. I'm Tim Scott. I'm at 225 Thoreau Circle in York County. I know I'm not from Newport News, but as part of Virginia Organizing, I'm here to fight for the right to affordable housing for everyone in the peninsula. So as you all are hopefully aware, a lot of your citizens are suffering under drastically increased rent in the past several months. In fact, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, median rent has increased across the country at an absolutely unprecedented rate. Not even, it hasn't even been seen in the housing prices of 2008. And despite that, you might think that that would be caused by a shortage of housing, but if you look at the numbers also from the U.S. Census Bureau of the number of vacant rental units, that hasn't declined significantly in the past few months. In fact, it's stayed pretty much steady for the past three or four years at least. So this is not a problem of a shortage of housing, it's a problem of a shortage of affordable housing. And so there's a few things that could be done to address this. In the short term, what we desperately need is shelter for unhoused people in the peninsula. Because of the cessation of eviction moratoriums throughout the country at various points and various localities, evictions are on the rise. Couple that with the drastically increasing rent, and evictions are going to continue skyrocketing. We immediately need shelter for unhoused people throughout the peninsula. In the longer term, we need to start promoting the construction of truly affordable housing. There's lots of housing projects going around that claim to be affordable, but then you look at the actual rent cost, once the building is finished, it's $1,000, $1,500, $2,000. That is not affordable. That is an absurd rate of rent that is going to continue increasing over time. So we need to actually push for truly affordable housing. Now, another thing that might be done in a sane society would be rent control. Unfortunately, cities in Virginia cannot pass rent control ordinances, but I encourage you all to perhaps get creative with the power that you have to try to solve the problems facing your citizens. As, you know, we all probably learned in high school health class, Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you start with food, shelter, and water, the most basic needs, and those should be what you all are fighting to fix first. Maybe you could try buying some properties yourselves and renting them out to your citizens at an affordable rate. There's a creative way. You can use your power. I encourage you all to, instead of trying to pass the buck on issues like gentrification, actually get creative and find ways you can help your citizens instead of finding excuses for why you haven't.
LaShere Denton.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is LaShere Denton, and I wanted to ask the city council concerning the two issues that they have for homeless intervention and special population housing and increased affordable housing units, which was supposed to be part of the five-year goal. And as of this year, it has not, our citizenry hasn't seen any fruits of this labor other than it costing them higher in taxes, having to be displaced and move to other areas to do this revitalization. After it happens, the rent is going to go up three to four times what the rent was before they left, so the likelihood is they're not going to return back. We have a situation where we have a homeless population where we can only afford to give 455 beds, and this is a combined total between the cities in the Hampton Roads area, where there's over 1,600 homeless people a year. You can do the math, okay? The statistics are skewed because they do not include city by city. It's a combined total, which makes it look like our homeless population is only 12%, which is absolutely ridiculous. Plus, the definition of homelessness is absolutely ridiculous. Basically, you have to be living out literally on the streets under a tree to be considered homeless. Well, what about the families that had to live in a single-family home for generation after generation because their children can't afford to buy housing? They can't afford to even fix up grandma and grandpa's house, you know? And even if they do because of some crazy tax incentives years ago that offered basically no personal property tax for seniors, but didn't tell the seniors that all that stuff is going to add up in the end, and when you try to transfer it to your children, your children are going to be the one that have to pay these big old balloon payments. So that means the likelihood is that the next generation is going to be homeless. They're not going to have a home, they're not going to want to stay here because they can't afford to pay the balloon payments that are on their grandma's, grandpa's, or mom's and dad's houses. You don't have respite housing for homeless people who have medical conditions. You don't even have overnight housing for homeless people that may need shelter at night. A day shelter, great, but the main problem is where am I sleeping with my children tonight? How do I feed them tonight? How do I get them to their doctor's appointments? Because even though there are job opportunities here, there's no 24-hour daycares to help people who have children that need to be monitored. There's nothing here to keep young people here. And we having to fight and fight and fight for our elders to feel like it's being defeated in the end because we have nothing to pass on to our children.
Thank you, ma'am. Fred Levy. Fred Levy or Levy? I'm sorry. Sorry, sir. Good evening.
It's okay. Hi, I'm Fred Levy, and I live at 11 Sherberg Drive here in Newport News. Been here in this town for 38 years, and thank you for allowing me to make a comment. I'm happy to be here. This is concerning the homeless and shelter and with an interest about possibly building, the city building more shelters for the homeless. And I want to speak from my tradition, the Jewish tradition, and from the standpoint of Torah and civic responsibilities as I understand it from the perspective of my tradition. The Torah is also known from, also from the five books of Moses, speaking mostly from Leviticus, but also from some other parts of the Jewish Bible as well. It's interesting, when we speak about justice, there's two words that we use. One is mishpatim in the Hebrew, which means a more traditional term for justice. But it's also a really intriguing word, which is sedaka, which means justice, but also combines with a word that we don't normally think of, which is charity, which is an odd mix, you know? But what it really means is we think in terms of a traditional understanding of justice, but not with the idea of, say, what we think of, say, of Hammurabi's Code, you know, which is an eye for an eye, tooth for a tooth. But also, it also softens it with this idea of caring for people, but not just as individuals, but as a society. So we look at Leviticus and what we call the Holiness Code, you know, which is, for example, the bedrock of Western civilization, you know? Treat your neighbor as yourself, right? Leviticus 1918, right? But also, don't put a stumbling block before the blind, which is also in chapter 19. And we also have, leave the edges of the fields for the poor. And we also talk about in the third and sixth year, you know, we leave a portion of our food supply for the needy, for the hungry. And I could go on, some of the other portions from other parts of the Bible, too. But the notion is, it's not just that we do these things as individuals, sure we do, but we also do these things as a society as well. And this is about good government because, you know, it's a contradiction that we do these things as individuals, but what? Government doesn't do this? Of course, government has to do this. We have to have civil and compassionate government as long as civil and compassionate individuals. And I like this as an idea, as a way of combining a compassionate and just government along with a compassionate and just citizenry as individuals, as a combined way. And this is an idea that informs me being, just how I treat individuals as a concerned citizen, but also a way I might involve myself and do involve myself as a...
Ms. Levy, I'm sorry. Your time is up, sir.
Oh, well, that's enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the cards I have for people to speak. We're now at new business. Madam Manager.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir. Just in March, the city council adopted a redistricting ordinance that was conditioned upon approval by the Attorney General's office. Before it became effective, we received the notice yesterday that the Attorney General has approved it. So the redistricting ordinance, the change in the districts, the change in the precincts... redistricting ordinance, the change in the districts, the change in the precincts, changes in the few voting places, were all now official and became official as of yesterday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Jenkins?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Scott?
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and thank you all for tuning in today to the council meeting. We appreciate those who came down. I know it takes a lot of courage to come down and speak, but we do appreciate you coming down and sharing your thoughts and ideas, and even giving us your suggestions on things that we can do better. I think that, even though it may not appear to be so, but I think at all times, we, the city manager team, the mayor, and the council, I think we try to do what's in the best interest of the citizens. And I know sometimes we probably fall short as far as your expectations, but I think most of our hearts in the right place. And I will speak for me. I will continue to do what I can to advocate for you all, and if there is anything that's in my power to do or that I can encourage us to do collectively, I always, always try to do that. But I just want to let you all know that even though we may not always agree, but we do, we do hear you, and we understand why you're here and how you came to be here. I just want to encourage the citizens in Denby. Councilwoman Woodbury is always trying to get meetings across the city, so Denby community, we are going to be at the Denby Community Center on Thursday for our next budget meeting on the 14th at 7:00. So, please come out and attend the budget hearing and just get an opportunity to share your points of view on the budget and also to meet your city management team and your council people. It's always a pleasure for me to see the citizens and to be able to interact and have a conversation and pass and or have you share a concern that we can address. Also, our next town hall meeting is still virtual for the town hall meeting, North District Town Hall Meeting is on April 20, I moved my notes for myself, April 28th, I believe, Monday, the fourth Monday, 25th. I'm like wishing my life away. It's on April 25th, thank you, Madam Clerk. And it's at 7:00. So, the link is usually sent out in Newport News now, but if you have some difficulty with it, you can always contact our city clerk's office at 757-926-8634. And also, if you have registered before, the last meeting, our IT director was sending out emails. So, if you get an email about the town meeting, that means you have registered before, and he's trying to send out some links to just keep it simple so that you'll have an opportunity to attend the meeting if you like. Last meeting, we had a fantastic time, a lot of conversation from different department heads, and Lisa Cipriano was there and gave us a lot of useful information. And everyone who attended, Lisa, they said, really enjoyed the information and the points of clarity that she made. So, I encourage you all to come and participate. And the only other thing I have to say, Mr. Mayor, is a happy resurrection, a happy resurrection day to you guys on Sunday. Be blessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do also want to thank the citizens. Thank you all for coming out to share your ideas and suggestions on us with our budget. And also, definitely have to thank Lisa Cipriani, our budget director, and her entire team for the work they do all year, but particularly getting us ready for this budget season. As you're aware, you know the public hearings are for you to come and give your input, so we definitely take note of what you're saying and will definitely consider your input. So, I thank you all for that. And also, I really wanted to, I was hoping Mike Popilowski was here because the Parks and Recreation Department did such a wonderful job on April 2nd for the Easter Egg Hunt at King Lincoln Park. I don't know if any of you were there, but we had a record number of attendees, and I think it had something to do with the hot air balloon rides that we had at the park. Yeah, I saw you out there. And so, yeah, and so, the youth had so much fun, and so did the adults, but I did, they, it was just a special time. The weather was perfect, and it really, I do want to thank them for the extra mile that they went for having the great vendors out there and great music. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Woodbury?
Yes, thank you very much. I want to thank those of you who spoke tonight, and your ideas, they're wonderful. I like the ideas that you, the gentlemen here, gave. So, we learn from each of you, and when you come down to speak. I have a lot more to say about the budget because I'm not in agreement. And when I walked in and met, I really think our citizens need more, more of a break. And I've, I said this to the city manager and to Lisa, whom I love dearly, but I don't think we went far enough in helping to counteract the enormous, the enormous increase in values of the homes. And that's a nice thing to happen, but it isn't so nice on people on fixed income or people who don't really have a lot. And so, I am glad to hear what you're talking about and to, really to encourage more people to come up with ideas. I will be, as I said, I'll be saying more about the budget later on because I don't think we did go far enough. But that's my personal opinion. I don't, my colleagues don't always agree with it, but I just really think you the people are the ones that are, we need to listen to, and we need to do everything we can. And if we have to put some projects off for a year or two, I think we should do it. And so, I do appreciate everything anyone has said and know that I will be speaking out more. I'm not shy about that. And I appreciate you, the people, and your ideas and your solutions because we need to listen to them. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Chair?
I'd like to say good evening to everyone, and thank you, everyone, for coming and sharing your comments with us tonight. It has really been fruitful to hear your concerns, and thank you for those of you who also shared your concerns, but you also shared what you think may be possible solutions. And I do invite everyone to be part of the process because we do represent you. Your comments are not ignored, they're not forgotten, but we do take them to heart. I please, I hope you do know that it is not only you that's impacted by what's happening as far as the tax, but we are impacted as well. So, we're not necessarily sitting up here thinking we're doing, I don't want you to think we're doing this to you because we're part of what's happening with these changes in the tax rate and everything. So, I have empathy for each one of you because it affects us, affects us as well. I do want to give a couple of shout-outs for, and the other thing I do want to, I hope, and I'm sorry that some have come and say that we're not transparent as we can be. I hope that you will make connections with whomever you choose on City Council, and if there's ever a time where you need information, we're open to share that information with you as much as we know. And I am about a person to get as much information as I can on an issue and be glad to share that with you as well. So, I know that there are some perceptions that we are not transparent, but as far as I know, I can be as transparent as I can be with what I know. And that that I don't know, I will tell you, I'll stand in integrity and tell you I don't know and try to help find the answer to that. And so, I do want to send a couple of shout-outs. Congratulations to New Business Say Cheese Selfie Studio. They had their grand opening ribbon cutting last week. If you have not been out to the selfie studio to take pictures, it's a beautiful facility, and they do have opportunities for groups to come in and have parties and things like that as well. So, it's up in Denby, a new business in Denby, so I'm excited to be a part of that. Also, First Baptist Church Morrison. Sunday was a beautiful dedication service to Pastor William Spencer and his, and Lady Kimberly Spencer. We're glad that they're in our community. Marcellus, thank you and your dad for all the hard work that you all have put into First Baptist Morrison, because without you all, you are part of the foundation. So, I want to say thank you to you, sir, and your dad. Last night, at the Achievable Dream Academy, there was a presentation about a grant that the Department of Environmental Quality, or DEQ, received regarding air quality. And the Southeast Community was selected as one of the communities in the Hampton Roads area to address air quality. The DEQ is proposing to utilize five fixed monitoring stations that have sophisticated sampling and analysis capabilities and a telemetry function that will provide real-time and near-time data to the DEQ. A lot of the residents in the Southeast Community, you know, we are impacted by many facets that create some pollution in our community. And so, we're thankful to DEQ for presenting, for their presentation last night. There was information passed out last night, and they have agreed that if anyone is interested in hosting a meeting so they can share more information, then they will make themselves available to do that. And I think it's really important that they want to hear the voice of the residents and to find out, where do you think the five stations need, the five monitoring stations need to be? So, I want to thank them for their time that they came with us last night to share that information. Also, I just want to make sure that you're aware of that Juneteenth for the City of Newport News, thank you, Madam Manager, for allowing us to go through the planning process for this. Juneteenth for the City of Newport News will be a week-long, eight days of events coming up and starting June the 11th through June the 19th. If you're interested in getting information, you can go to nnva.gov/juneteenth. We will not have a Your Voice Matters South District meeting for this coming Thursday. We normally have it on the second Thursday at Midtown Community Center. However, because we will have a public hearing at Denby Community Center for the budget, we will, we will not have our event there, our Your Voice Matters South District meeting. Also, on next Thursday, which will be the 17th, 19th, we will be looking at whether or not we need to do face-to-face or whether or not you're interested in Zoom to continue with the Zoom meetings. Some people are very comfortable with having Zoom, and yet some want to come face-to-face. But we want to respect your time and make sure that we're doing what the majority of you would like to have us do. And in those meetings, we do talk about the new housing development that's coming up. We do talk about the new project for Huntington Middle School. We do talk about those things in those meetings. So, if you have been absent from those meetings, I invite you to come. If you're not on our emailing address, you can email me at scheri@nnva.gov, and I'll make sure that you get the information about when those town hall meetings will meet. Thank you also to our Parks and Recreation Department for fabulous Easter extravaganza. And on April the 23rd, we will have our enthusiasts, I forget what they call it, winter enthusiasts at Newport News Park. And so, I invite you all to come out there and thank Marcella Isana and Special Events, Mike Popilowski, Madam Manager, for allowing us to have these activities for the cities. Thank you.
Councilman Harris?
Yes, I also want to thank everyone who came out on tonight and shared their comments, feedbacks, opinions on tonight, which is always, we're appreciative of because that helps us as we move forward with the decisions that we make. Want to congratulate and thank Life House Church for putting on the community egg hunt this past Saturday, which it was a lot of kids running around picking up eggs and some of the activities for some of the partnerships that were, that they established. I saw the police department, fire department, some of their, their trucks and equipment that the kids got a chance to explore and see how some of those instruments work. And also, to, to the Tri-City Youth Foundation who partnered up with them, a membership that I'm a part of as well, as they helped with some of the activities with the young people that were there. In addition to Dr. Cherry's comment about First Baptist Church Morrison, Dr. William, Pastor William Spencer, and them opening up the beautiful new worship edifice down at First Baptist Church Morrison, they also surprised us as a family by recognizing my father, who was a pastor there for 45 years, retired in 2016, by naming the administrative offices in his honor. So, we had a good time as a family being there Sunday morning to witness that recognition, and we're appreciative for all that Pastor Spencer and the First Baptist Church community is continuing to do up in the North District and beyond as they are continuing on a vision that he, my father, had started years ago when he took that small church that was originally a Ward Boulevard, now up on Patrick Henry Drive in, in Denby section of Newport News. So, thank you for all that you're doing, and continue to share your feedback, emails, show up on Thursday as we continue the process of approving a budget as we move forward. And that's all I have, Mayor Price.
Thank you. The, it was good to see a lot of the boys scouts and girl scouts here tonight. That was, I think, the largest group we've seen of that. It's also, we didn't have an opportunity to hear. The mayor's youth commission was here as well. I think we ran a little long. Their rides had probably arrived, so they had to leave, but they had a presentation, I believe, to do, and maybe we'll get to them next time. That's a great group of kids to work with, young, young adults. I'd also like to recognize and honor a dedicated citizen's public safety specialist during this week's National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, which is April 10th through the 16th. I visited downstairs this morning, went through the operations. We are so blessed to have such a dedicated staff there. These are the first people you talk to in an emergency, life and death situations. They take their work very seriously. We've got a ton of equipment down there, and it's wonderful to see technology blend into being able to help people. So, I just want to give them a special thank you and a deepest appreciation for what they do. It's a hard job, it really is. And last, I just want to voice a personal concern of this council, possibly asking a manager to do something that may be impossible, and that is to get a six-year plan that is going forward with the taxi cab to get everybody to agree. I mean, we don't all agree, but when the majority rules, we bring forth the decision and go on. To think that everyone, a large cab, a small cab, and everything is going to, everybody's going to agree on that, and seeing come by, y'all, it's not going to happen. But, you know, we will discuss it again. Hopefully, public safety is one of the main issues with the taxi cabs because we regulate it. So, we're responsible for that as well. So, I just want us to keep that in mind as we further continue to discuss this, this industry. And it is our right to discuss how they do the business when the public is involved, that their safety is involved in that. So, keeping that in mind, if there's nothing else, all minds clear, then may what you say and do uplift the City of Newport News, we stand adjourned.
Happy Easter.